Hi Ellen.
Hello.
Good to go.
Oh yeah, I see your pupils are extremely big.
All right. I'm calling the November, what's today's day?
Third.
Thank you. The November 3rd meeting of the Patent Township Planning Commission meeting to order. So first things first, we have a call. A motion to approve the minutes from the September 12th, or the September 8th and September 12th meetings.
Okay. Second.
Right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to public comments. Now, at this time, anybody that's in the room or on television can address the Planning Commission, should they wish, on any matter that is not in the current agenda. Is there anybody in the room that would like to do that? Seeing none, is there anybody online that would like to do that? All right, moving on. Okay, that brings us to item fulfill more market land development plan. Amy, would you...
Jenna's gonna take it.
Jenna, would you take us away on that, please?
All right, so today, provided the agenda, we have the Fillmore Market and Cafe Land Development Plan. This is identified as tax parcel 18002021. It's owned by JCP Group LLC. The existing building on the site has an address of 2781 Buffalo Run Road. And this parcel contains approximately 3.66 acres. It's Zoned R1, rural residence. And the plan is proposing to construct a 3,300 square foot market and cafe with associated infrastructure on the site. One item to note, zoning variance, so in May, May 2nd, 2024, a use variance was granted by the Patent Township zoning hearing board to permit this pre-existing non-conforming use to continue on this parcel at this new location, which is all in the same parcel, however, across the street on 550. Additionally, the applicant part of that granting of that use variance, the applicant is required to demo the existing building that you can see on my screen and restore the northern side of the parcel back to its natural state. And I also have Webia as well, you might be able to see it in some of the renderings that we have. But the area on the northern side of 550 here, there is a stream, wetland, and so it's a very sensitive area. This is an improvement, having that building demoed and having that site back to its natural state and moving all this over to the opposite side of the roadway. Total, there will be 26 parking spaces, they will have a drive-through on-site. It is all not septic. Otherwise, the only outstanding comment staff has are administrative in nature.
Does the Planning Commission have any questions for Jenna?
Jenna, when that original building gets taken down, I think there's a parking lot area that'll also, everything on that side will go back to its natural state.
Any other comments?
A lot of cyclists use that area, and I'm imagining that this will, that'll be a great stop. There are cyclists on their white way of Elphon. I'm wondering if there's any accommodation going to be made for bike path or any kind of... I just think it's gonna be a great spot for...
Yeah, you are right. This is a state route already.
Yeah, some, there's, it's pretty scary sometimes.
Yeah. So is Route 45. And I think this is a state bicycle route, too. Yeah.
But the property, there's no plan to do any...
There will be outdoor seating, there will be bike parking on the property, so...
But in terms of like a pathway?
Additional right-of-way, unfortunately.
And it's not really required, right?
And while being all four bike paths, there's just sort of a limit, especially where this property is located on what, I mean, it'd be a very short bike path.
I just kept hoping it'll connect to something else someday.
That's actually a good comment, and a larger bike path along Route 550 is something the MPO could be asked to consider in the future, depending on funding and other things, but it's a good comment that could be forwarded, you know, for the long-range transportation plan to the MPO.
I'll put it in my notes to do that.
And if they wanted to do that, there's an existing right-of-way that would allow it without impinging on this property, I guess?
I don't know. It's a state road, I don't know.
It's a state road with, right now, where the bikes are, get to have four feet of the roadway, if I'm not mistaken, well, by law. But it's all on-road, and the limit line, there is no, nothing on the other side of that limit line that is just basically straight to gravel, if not straight to dirt, if not straight to something else. Are there any more questions from the Township Planning Commission? Is there anybody that would like to speak about this in, you know, in the audience?
We have the applicant engineer here for additional questions.
Be glad to say hello. Michael Pravat Keller engineers on behalf of the developer JCP Group. And the bicycle question is a good one. Parking is provided on the site for outdoor spaces and then two inside the building as well.
Isn't it paved? It's paved versus gravel? And on the entrance, the entrance will be paved versus gravel, or...
For the driveway entrance?
Yep.
Yeah, that's paved.
That's what I thought, okay.
And the bicycle parking is in a concrete area outside.
Well, given that nobody else has any questions, would somebody like to, what?
Well, I do actually have one.
Okay, go for it.
So will the parking lot be like one-way for an entrance and one-way for an exit? It won't be two ways on either side, or...
Well, it's a little bit of both. Think of the front parking area as two-way traffic, and then the rear, the drive-up window lane is one-way.
Okay.
It runs clockwise. So it's wide enough out front to allow for two-way. And then it's signed with inside the internal stop conditions, so you don't get any cross-traffic conflicts.
Because I just think it would be real important to have just one way as the entrance, and then another way as the exit, being that, I mean, that is a pretty narrow road, and there sometimes is some traffic on there.
Yeah, well, to that point, the driveway is bifurcated. It has a four-foot concrete median island in it, so effectively, it is one-way in and one-way out off with that median divider.
What do they envision for the drive-through? I'm thinking Chick-fil-A. I'm thinking a Chick-fil-A fiasco.
Developer would certainly hope for that. That was... That was certainly to the fore in the early planning for this, so the stacking accommodation is 14 vehicles, and that includes five ahead of the menu board. The traffic study affirms that length is safe. Very safe.
Then we get into the asking, you know, what's their turnaround time on their kitchen? How fast can they get people through the driveway if they turn into Chick-fil-A?
1.67 minutes per vehicle. That's how far the traffic study goes.
There you go.
Very thoughtful idea.
All right. Are there, other than the administrative questions, are there any concerns from staff?
No.
Are there any further questions?
No.
Parking, bicycle, bicycle parking, questions on light, questions on signage?
Questions on noise?
Nope.
Questions on anything? Okay.
Looks like a great thing.
All right, well, in that case...
A motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and your motion is to approve it as-is?
Yes. Prove as-is.
With administrative comments. Does that sound good to you? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same, opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, and this has been approved by us, and we'll go up to the board supervisors.
We'll turn agenda next Wednesday, the 12th.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to other business. Now, I noticed that we had multiple civil, civil engineering students from Penn State. Aye. It's Brian. So, do you have any questions about what we do, since that was the last Jedi?
Not really. We have assignments to come through, which may be... At least one major about the landfill, or this would have been a lovely meeting.
Because it was short.
Yes.
If you're ever looking for an internship, there's a lot of civil engineers in the center region, so definitely want to reach out to some of the municipalities and see if they do internship with one of us. I know College Township, which is where my husband works, he's the engineer there, they had an intern over the summer who got to do some fun things, so...
If you're looking, again, into local government, we'd love to have you come intern summer.
Your first message. Good job.
All right, and just to add the note, I will take the suggestion of a bicycle path along that route, especially now that there's the Fillmore Market going in there to the MPO at the next MPO hearing, which I'll have to double and triple-check on when that is, because it's every three months. And I do not have very much to report from any of the MPOs or the other planning commissions that we, that I service. With that...
I have another question. So I noticed that you guys are doing the rental permit log. Is this keeping up to date on our website as well? Does anybody know?
So I do include it in my board packet in the manager's report. We've been keeping up to date that way, so that we have Nicole's report in there every month. We are actually still seeing an intern who's gonna come from the School of Public Policy to do a study for short-term rental regulations and also to identify some possible changes that we need to make. We've definitely heard from people about occupancy and also about parking issues that we've had with some of these short-term rentals. So the board will get that in June and then discuss it, and I want the intern to put together some recommendations for some paths forward as well for them. So, yeah, we are trying to keep everybody as updated as we can on the short-term rentals. We have money in the 2026 budget to actually get Deckard, which is the software that everyone around us uses to help us mine for short-term rentals. Deckard told Nicole, I think we have 350 short-term rentals in the township, which is a lot.
How many do you know that you have?
Maybe 50.
Get out. Wow, okay.
And I just found one today on Airbnb, because we had a police call over the weekend that's not registered.
So we've had a decent number of folks who've come to the board meetings to complain about short-term rentals and some of the issues that we're having with them. We tell everybody the same message, we want you to be our pioneers and you need to call the police. There's a reluctance sometimes when it's a big game weekend, because they're afraid we're busy with other things. That's not true, we always have officers here at the station. So you should certainly always call the 1-800 number, the non-emergency number, to report issues, because if we don't know about it, we can't find them. And that's what the software will help, the software will help find them and send out documentation saying, hey, you have a short-term rental, we have regulations you need to get yourself.
I think this is really helpful, because you, I kind of watch it, because I live in Park Forest, and I listen to the Board of Supervisors meeting, and that brings another point. Sometimes we don't always have a whole hour and a half to listen to the Board of Supervisors meeting. It would be great, and I know staffing is probably an issue on this, if we could have a bullet point of what happens at those meetings. I mean, I, I've watched it, because I heard the people talking about Stoneledge, and I thought it was very, I didn't know about that, so I was glad that I participated. And then when I was looking over our minutes, I saw this on the back, and I was like, okay, so where is it today? But it's not here.
Yeah, we can definitely add something in here, so you get a little update on what the board's...
Yeah.
We actually, we can add like recent actions by the board or items that they've discussed, so that you know what's going on at their level. That's not a problem at all.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's really helpful, because you don't always have, you know, that whole time to sit and watch it, but I thought it was very valuable, and that's why I asked about that. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And one other note, not related to short-term rentals, that the Attainable Housing Advisory Committee will hold its first meeting on November 17th at noon. And we actually have a Penn State student from the School of Public Policy who is very interested in short-term rentals and leasing and zoning and planning, and he's gonna come shadow me that day and attend the meeting as well, so we'll get a sense of what we're doing on a local level.
Is the young guy that was making recommendations, has he been participating at all, doing them?
I don't know that Elliot's gonna participate at all, I'm not sure, but it would be nice if he would, because we do have his proposal that we did look at, so...
Were you saying there are about 350 rentals?
Mm-hmm, short-term rentals, yeah.
And 14...
We're up to 50 now that have permits for us. That's the most recent.
So they're just a little slow getting aboard?
I think there's a lot of people that don't understand they need to do things.
Yes, someone in my community said they, they love Patent Township, because there's no requirement to have it.
Yeah, it's funny, our friends in Harris Township are getting the brunt of this right now, they're getting sued and all kinds of things, because they're doing more broad-based regulations, and they're banning them out of places. And it's funny, because people are like, you guys are great, and I'm like, no, actually, we have regulations, and we have more that are probably coming in June after the board discusses this. Because we've really, you know, we tried to take a very purposeful step in this and see what's going on, and I think we were surprised at the number that we have. And I think the occupancy has been the biggest thing that's come to us, because, you know, we have properties that they're trying to rent to 15 people.
So it's over occupancy?
Yeah. Yeah, and we have some people that are creating duplexes, and the whole discussion on accessory dwelling units that we had a couple of years ago, plenty of them now in Township, because they're running well.
You wouldn't believe the number of calls we get on people from out of town want to come here and buy short-term rentals. They think it's gonna be the greatest thing since life's spread until we tell them you have to go through all the policies and procedures. They have no idea that it's like that.
Well, and the state is actually, there's a bill that's about to be introduced in the state to try to regulate some of this, because it's really become an issue not just here, it's Philadelphia, it's Oklahoma, it's Lancaster, it's other places. And municipalities are regularly so trying to take the lead and do something, and there's just been all kinds of blowback. And it's a huge industry. It's an $88 million business in the state college. It just is state college.
Yeah.
It's like a $300 million business in the state of Pennsylvania.
That's crazy. Well, it might not be a problem for the rest of the football season.
So, I mean, we might have had that discussion with the staff.
That was not funny, Sharon.
And interestingly, when I was in Florida for my conference for ICMA last week, I was talking to a manager from somewhere around Fort Lauderdale, Florida, mentioning about the Penn State students, and then also about short-term rentals. And she goes, well, it's not really a thing here, because we get all the people from the north that come down in the winter, and, you know, they stay, and that's kind of the season. But she said, we're, we all are starting to talk about it, because there's more people that want to buy these up. So it's kind of spreading everywhere across the country.
And with that, do we have any more questions, comments, concerns? Everybody have a good holiday?
Yep.
Yeah, I was surprised to find out that he was trick-or-treating through the day.
I love it.
All right. With that, I call this meeting to close, and everybody go by getting up and going home. With that, I call this meeting to close, and everybody go by getting up and going home.